All right, everybody ready? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, November 18th, 2020. As always, we begin our deliberations with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation this morning will be brought to us by the Reverend Dr. Robert Baker, Rector, Christ Episcopal Church. Please stand.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you for serving and caring for our city. Let us pray. We pray for our mayor. We pray for the city council. We pray for all those who are engaged in the care of our city and its citizens. We pray for the city of Bradenton. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that heavenly city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the city of Bradenton. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the meeting to order. Dispassion.
Good morning. We have no proclamations today, but under presentations, we have the announcement of the November 3rd, 2020 election results. According to our code, those need to be read into the record, so if you'll indulge me, I will do so now. From the certificate of the County Canvassing Board of Manatee County. City of Bradenton Charter Amendment Number One. The city charter amendment clarifying the powers of the office of vice mayor. Shall the Bradenton City Charter be amended to provide that when temporarily exercising the powers of mayor, the vice mayor may vote as a council member but may not exercise the mayor's veto power, while providing that upon a vacancy in the office of mayor, the vice mayor assumes the office of mayor with all its powers until the next city election. Yes for approval: 17,255 votes. No for rejection: 6,515 votes. Yes for approval prevailed. City of Bradenton Charter Amendment Two. City Charter Amendment removing initial technical and transition provisions, archaic language, and boundary descriptions. Shall the Bradenton City Charter be amended to remove initial technical and transition provisions that have long since occurred, revise archaic language, and provide that the legal description of the corporate boundaries of the city will be kept on file with the city clerk? Yes for approval: 17,573 votes. No for rejection: 5,890 votes. Yes for approval prevailed. City of Bradenton Charter Amendment Three. City Charter Amendment revising the powers of the office of mayor. Shall the Bradenton City Charter be amended to revise the powers of the office of mayor to remove the office's general executive and supervisory powers, the power to appoint, terminate, and direct the police chief, and the power to fill certain temporary vacancies, but retain the powers to provide at city council meetings, break ties in council votes, appoint committees, and veto ordinances? Yes for approval: 11,617 votes. No for rejection: 12,123 votes. No for rejection prevailed. We have two more. For City of Bradenton Mayor. The whole number of votes cast was 24,002, of which Jean Brown received 13,096 votes. Harold E. Byrd Jr. received 8,170 votes. Dmitri Dennis received 2,736 votes. Jean Brown prevails. For Bradenton City Council Ward Five. The whole number of votes cast was 22,924, of which Pamela Mitchell Coachman received 12,343 votes. Keenan Wooton received 10,581 votes. Pamela Mitchell Coachman prevailed. And again, that's it. The swearing-in will be Tuesday, January 5th, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Where will we do that swearing-in?
Well, we've got the auditorium reserved. We'll see what kind of attendance that we're looking at having, but either in here or in the auditorium if the needs request.
We're at the point of the meeting in citizen comments. Council members open to the public. All are welcome to attend the meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at the meeting. We are at that point. I have one person signed up. Lynn Perry. Please come forward. Name and address for the record, please, Lynn.
Lynn Perry. 1116 14th Avenue West, Village of the Arts. Good morning, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for hearing me out. Good morning, Mr. Roth. We've had a conversation prior to my being here, and I was asked to come here by Councilman Roth. I've been living in my residence. Purchased it in 2017. I, on either side of me, have rental homes owned by the same landlord. There's a gentleman on my east side that has chosen to run a lawn service, Aztec Lawn Service. He's been running it since February 3rd of 2019. He didn't register it with the city until December 4th. That's a 10-month period, and he's been running it subsequently until present for another 11 and 1/2 months. For 21.5 months imposed upon me has been a lawn service, which inherent with that, such is early morning loading and unloading, noise, odor from vehicles and gear. He leaves much earlier than 7:00 in the morning and returns quite often at 8:30 at night. It's after 7:00 at night. So I've gone several different avenues for this. It's a long extended story, and I'm sorry that it's gone this long, but I'm the one that's most sorry in that code enforcement was not able to help me in any manner. When I first went to them, I had the ordinance that I was given before I purchased, which was for the Village of the Arts overlay. It is my understanding that such a business that has been going on is not permitted in my overlay, muchly because of the activities and times and noise and what is presented upon my lawn next door or the neighboring lot. I went from there to the police. The police came by with what we thought was something that we could use, which would be the ordinance for loading and unloading before 9:00 a.m. on the weekends and holidays and after 7:00 p.m. Israel spoke with him for more than an hour. He's a bilingual officer. Israel Castillo is the owner of the business or person who's running the business. He hasn't abided by any of those regulations. Can't do that, which inherent with the business, I understand it, but imposed upon me has been this for 21 and 1/2 months. So I've kind of just been riding it out, and the police said, "Please contact us when this happens." And after so long, it got to the point where one of the police officers said, "You know, you should just record what's happening and then do a civil lawsuit, a nuisance, private nuisance lawsuit." The person that this is happening with rents. I own. His name's not even on a lease. So very involved. So I kind of just kept recording, and I have since proceeded with doing some renovations to my little property. I've been there quite a while. In this 21 and 1/2 months, I actually had my mother in my house on hospice for six of it. So now my mother has passed, December 4th of last year, and I'm getting on with renovating. Oh, is that my time? Sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Well, and now I'm getting ready to perhaps open a gallery, per se, in the Village of the Arts with COVID and everything. Who knows what's happening? But I'm proceeding with renovating and making it a better property. The house is owned by drug runners before I bought it. We're trying to improve the neighborhood. I've spent over $4,000 putting two new doors in. I now have a front door. I just don't see that this business next door to me is intrinsic to our neighborhood in any way. It certainly doesn't do any favors for me, and I would like it to, at some point, something be changed.
Mr. Roth, that's your ward.
It is. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First off, Ms. Perry, thank you for being here. I got this email November 16th. Did you send it to everyone or just me?
I sent it to you.
Okay. So I was going to bring this up today.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's what... So it explains the situation in detail. And you, as you said, there's been many involvement of different wings of the city.
Yes.
But no one coming together. Mr. Callahan and I, the city administrator, and I have discussed this. And there are a few issues that we need to address on this. As in, you do have an overlay, so... And... But then there's a question as to whether this is the type of operation can be done anywhere in the city or the overlay, and/or what does that mean?
Right.
And the conversation that we had, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Callahan, is we should probably workshop this to see what could be... What the cure could this could be? Because certainly, the intention of the overlay is not to have industrialized businesses in there. That's the intent. It may not be specific enough right now.
Yes.
Right, and that's what we looked at, and I've talked at length to Volker about it. Everybody recognizes that it's an issue. How to resolve it is a little bit different. Village of the Arts overlay, and this is where Scott and we all need to get together from a workshop standpoint. The overlays grant additional things that couldn't happen someplace else. Don't necessarily prohibit things that could happen elsewhere. And that's a bit of our dilemma when we're trying to keep the nature of the neighborhood. So I'll need to address it with Scott as to are there things that we can tweak in that overlay so as to potentially make some things you can't do there as opposed to just more things that you can do? Having the home office, having the galleries and things you can't do elsewhere, but you can do there, and that was why it was laid out that way. But if it is getting to be, and it sounds like it's getting to be a problem, the other use is creating a problem, then I'll talk with Scott, and we should probably workshop that to say, "What are our solutions?" Is it a change in the ordinance that we want to do to be able to give some options when something like this happens? Because from code standpoint, Volker's hands are kind of tied. The noise is not a noise ordinance issue. It's a nuisance issue.
Yeah.
And it's gotten to be where it gets more personal than anything. And that's... We face that several areas in town. We also have some where we're needing to come up with. We have a conscientious objector to mowing a lawn.
Right.
You know, which really seems silly, but somebody won't mow the lawn. And where do the powers of the city? We can do it, but where do we want to come into play that we're going to absolutely disenforce that on people?
Right.
So we've got some issues in multiple areas that we want to try to address.
Right. And on that front, since it is an overlay, the reason for it is, you know, we're purposefully investing a lot of time and energy in there to try to turn around a neighborhood that was once overridden with crime, drugs, and prostitution. And we're doing very well, but there's a lot to do, especially on the south end. And this is not a new issue. I know at one point in time, there was a tree service in there where the owner died violently, but it was, you know, this was a long time ago. And it was completely industrial, you know? So it's probably something that's not a new issue, and it's probably something that we need to address. And I don't know, that's just... We don't have to vote on that or anything.
Could I add something?
Go ahead.
It's just, over the time span, it's a long period of time. I was first told to approach him. It was a neighborly issue, and his response was, "If you complain more, I'm going to make more noise." So that set a really not a neighborly tone. He chooses to park the vehicles closer to where I reside than where he and his family... It's a two-unit, but it's like a four separate entities. And they've all basically said, "Well, we don't want it next to where we are because he'll wake us up." I volunteered to provide fencing, posts, and the cement if they would get a permit, if Tim Wyatt, who's the owner of the building, would get a permit to put the fencing up. And he laughed at me and said, "I'm not going to... I don't want anything from you for free." I have pictures of where the buildings sit. I have 30-foot setback. He has 15. So I can put up one panel of fencing, which is not going to mask what I have. I brought photos for you if you'd like to see them. It's just, it seems like, you know, worst-case scenario for me, best-case scenario for him. So...
And please, please get with us and Karen in our office, because we do have grants available for fencing that wouldn't have to come from you. He couldn't say that it's coming from you. It's coming from the city. So we do have those type of options.
And again, it's...
For the owner, not obviously.
He doesn't really want to make me happy on any account, and he's made that very clear.
Right.
Yeah, so it's kind of... I've come to this point. I was reminded by Myra Schwartz that, you know, he can't run that business. He can put an office there, but the gear can't be there. So it is my aim today to hopefully get the gear moved, because anything that's there, he's going to, you know, he's going to use it, so... There's a gasoline smell as well. I can't really open my windows, and at this time of year, it would be lovely to open my windows, but I can't.
Okay. If you would like to leave your pictures with the clerk, that would be great.
Thank you.
And Mr. Callahan, we also, as we workshop this, we need to have whoever the property owner is...
Tim Wyatt.
We need to know that and have that... Have some sort of reach out to him in some fashion rather than just the next-door neighbor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Ms. Barnum?
I just had a question. I thought that there was some sort of standard by which businesses in those areas couldn't begin operation until, like, 8:00 a.m. Am I wrong? I mean, or do I... Did I just dream that up? I don't know. Maybe I agree that a workshop is needed. There might be some other neighborhood issues that we could kind of all lump together to try to come up with some solutions.
I think you may have missed the first part. There is a starting time and a closing time.
Right. But, you know, if... I thought there was regulations on that, but if he's starting at, like, 7:00 in the morning in a residential area, I'm just wondering why we can't enforce the regular time.
And indeed, we tried. A police officer went by, and subsequent... I got tired of calling the police, because by the time they got there, he'd left, because he leaves at an hour which is changing of the guard normally. So as it was recommended by PD, I just kept filming it. It's, you know, it's usually before 7:00. And this is Friday evenings, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. President's Day, it was 7:10 in the morning. Yes. Yeah. It's a little much.
I agree that I think we need to workshop this.
Thank you.
Right. What I would like to do, before we make assumptions that we're not certain of, we'll relook at the Village of the Arts overlay information and the other information that could apply so that we're applying the correct standard, not... And I know nothing toward Ms. Barnum. Be just making sure we're got the right numbers and right information in front of us.
Well, and we do need to be consistent throughout the city, and that's important.
Mr. Roth.
Yeah, and just one last note. And you've made... We've talked, so, and you've made it aware that your relationship with the landlord and possibly lawnmower is somewhat unhostile. So if you have... If you feel you're being threatened in any manner, please call the police or call me.
Well, like I said, I have on film, you know... When he's obviously not happy that I'm filming him now, I was told to by the police. So I'm not very comfortable pursuing that and further because he's getting pretty aggressive. So I'm now doing it from my window, and it's just, you know... His last exchange was, "I don't care if it's a Sunday." And with gestures and fingers in the air, and I'm being called all kinds of names. He said, "This is from my neighbor who wants to live in a perfect world." So I've kind of backed off, and hopefully, we can resolve something. And I've looked everywhere else in the Village of the Arts, and there are businesses that are being run that I don't know whether they're under the arts overlay, but they're not happening during these hours with this same imposition on the immediate lot, so...
Well, and as we work forward, so we're going to have to set this up for workshop. And it takes a little bit of time to arrange all that and have discussion, and then trickle it down to what is legal. And so we have a little bit of time, and that's what I was just concerned about. Your safety in the meanwhile.
I appreciate that.
Let us know if there's any issues.
I appreciate that. And my key worry is that his coming up to his... He registered December 4th of last year. So I'm hoping that we can curtail that next...
You mean with a business license?
Right.
That has no jurisdiction, other than he's paying a tax to operate a business in the city of Bradenton. There's no special qualification that goes with that.
Okay.
Ms. Callahan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we not have an ordinance in the city of Bradenton that prohibits noise prior to 7:00 in the morning that involves businesses?
There are certain types of noises that cannot happen. Most of it is consistent noises that keep going on. If you look at some of the definitions, the initial noises, such as starting up vehicles, starting up certain other machinery, is generally exempted from that. So I don't want to get... Like I'd said before with Ms. Barnum, I don't want to quote the things and being held to it. But there are a lot of things that, from our noise ordinance, that allows certain things to happen because they're only supposed intermittent or one-time deals. Meaning, we can't stop somebody from going to work at 5:30 in the morning if their work calls them to go to 5:30 and they happen to have a noisy truck. Now, that's not what kind of this is, but you can't prohibit those kind of things.
Right.
So those are the things we run into with the noise ordinance from an enforcement standpoint. Mr. Callahan?
Well, my next question is, have we had somebody from code enforcement or the police department be out there at this location at that time of the morning so we can see and possibly video what is going on?
I don't know that we've had code out there at that time in the morning. It sounds like PD maybe at some point in time had been.
PD has made repeated visits. And like I said, it's usually during the change of shift. And they got to the point where they were sympathetic to me and said, "You just need to record this and then pursue, because we can't get here in time to do this."
You feel... We've talked... You feel that PD's been the most helpful, not that anyone was not trying to help you, but...
No, Officer Davis was very helpful in that I brought to him the loading and unloading under the Bradenton, City of Bradenton, the sound control. And Section 38154, unreasonable sound. Can't do it before 9:00 on weekends and holidays or after 7:00. Never been it here, too. Yeah, and he went there. He spent an hour with the gentleman, and he's bilingual.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, for letting me continue. And the reason why I'm asking these questions is that I remember very clearly that one of the developments in Ward One, that code enforcement was out in the morning before 7:00 stopping painters from painting inside of a house. And we all know how much noise a paintbrush makes when it's being painted on the wall. So if we can go to those kind of extremes, this particular situation that this young lady is talking about, why can't we stop it before we have a workshop and then deal with it? I mean, is it that much of a void, and we don't know whether it's breaking the law or not? Is that what that is?
Yes. It goes between breaking the law and being just an absolute nuisance, which becomes civil issues as opposed to which of our laws are they actually violating?
Well, I can understand... I've got across the street from me, and that's the reason why I'm an early upper, a guy that goes to work with a loud vehicle, cranks it up at 5:30 in the morning, and sits there and lets it run at least two days before he drives off.
Diesel.
I can understand that. Don't like it, but I understand. But if they are starting up machinery, or are they... I mean, what is it they're making noise with?
Driving off in the morning with his machinery to go to work elsewhere.
So it's just, it's the vehicle?
He's loading up the blowers and the trimmers and stuff. There's a small shed that is four feet away from the property line. My house is eight feet away.
Are there motors running, though, ma'am?
Pardon me?
Are there motors running or just the physical moving of it?
Not all the time. Occasionally, he has to move... He hooks it up the day before or whatever, and he moves the trailer forward and unloads one of the mowers. His business is... It's increased from him alone with, you know... I mean, I brought photos. It's just, it's gotten huge in that he has three workers showing up. And they're all loading up and parking their cars and loading up the gear with him, and then all leaving together in the work vehicles. It's often that they take the work truck and the trailer attached to it, and then he drives in his own truck. So it's, I mean, he's, you know... Give the guy credit. I mean, he's due diligence for work ethic, but I just don't want it next door to me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is the first I've been made aware of it. The council just recently approved three officers to serve as community officers. That's in the CRA. I always encourage folks, if they don't find satisfaction, to escalate things up. Before you all embark on anything further, why don't you at least let me send somebody out, one of the community officers, and provide a full assessment, document exactly what the problem is? It sounds to me that this may fall outside of our current ordinance because it's not necessarily operation of a business, but rather leaving to go operate a business. However, nonetheless, let us get a little bit better interpretation, and I'll provide you some documentation, and then you all can decide what you can do from a code's perspective. So if you just give me probably till the next meeting, I can take care of that. That is precisely why we were approved for these officers to do more long-term problem solving.
Thank you for bringing it up. But that's... You're right.
Yes, absolutely. And I would tell you, I would discourage, at this point, of you video or filming.
I'm not at this point.
I don't want to agitate what sounds like...
And that's what brought it to the head was when Myra Schwartz basically confirmed what I had thought to be true before I purchased. They gave me the Village of the Arts overlay with what businesses could be run, and this does not come under the listing. And it stipulates that something other would have to be special-use district okayed by... And that would have been checking in with me as well, because I'm the bordering lot, so...
I'll send somebody out to talk to you directly.
Thank you. Officer Davis was the first on hand.
And he's great, but I've got some more senior officers that are a little bit better equipped to do a little bit higher degree of problem solving.
Thank you. And the further issue is not just the vehicles. I mean, it's not just the vehicle. It's that they sit for a week at a time filled with yard debris. It's not pretty. We're the Village of the Arts. I have another neighbor who's off the other corner of my property who doesn't run a business. I think he does his children's lawns. He goes out on a Friday, doesn't leave till 11:00. But he has a full shed, and it's encapsulated in his backyard. It's not something that we look at all the time. And this is right... I mean, it's 10 feet away from my new door.
All right, talk with the police officers when they come out.
Thank you.
They'll have a full story on what the situation is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish us to speak to the council on any agenda or non-agenda item? Anyone who wishes to speak to council? Anyone? Hearing none, let's move forward. Ms. Bochum?
Yes, thank you. At this time, we are asking approval of the consent agenda items A through S.
I'd like to remove item A for discussion.
You want to remove item A?
Yeah, for discussion, yes.
Uh, yeah, for discussion, yes.
Uh, move to approve consent agenda B through S.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda items B through S. Any discussion? Hearing none, the vote, Ward 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
Consent agenda items A through S, approved, votes five to zero. Mr. Sanders?
I removed the consent agenda, item A, employment contracts, and last I remember we discussed this, and I never got a feeling that everybody was on board, on the council with, moving forward with this, and then I see it on a consent agenda, so I'd like to have some discussion of it, because I think it changes maybe some, uh, things that we're not doing currently, and I have several other things, but I'd like to open up the discussion to the other councilmen, council people, to discuss this. I mean, there's several, several points, for example, termination of a, of a, and I think there's some ambiguity in, in whether these are department heads, or whether these are in-line employees, and it, it seems like that we're using, that we could not protect maybe some department heads that may get sideways with an administrator or a mayor, and it says the mayor or city administrator on behalf of the city council can terminate, and I don't want it to be on my behalf, I'd like it to be on my consent.
The way we've looked at this, and we've looked at this a couple of different ways, the first time we wrote this, it was obviously before we had the election, and we did a revision of it, so it's certain to clarify a few things, with the possibility, and Sharon brought that today, that if we want to, there is a little bit of ambiguity, we tried to make it a catch-all, it catches every situation that was out there concerning police chiefs, department heads, non-department heads, but still serve at, kind of at will, which is, there is a difference. There is an IT director, there is a human resource director, there are several folks that are not department directors, but, and therefore do not serve at the will of the council. They serve at the will of the city, or at the administrator, or whatever else, and you would follow normal protocols for them, that if you wanted to get rid of them, you would do the review, they have their, they have certain rights that are a little different than council, just saying, I use the example, you wore the wrong color of shoes today, therefore here's what happens to you. We did a clarification on the most recent revision, which we brought, figuring this would probably come off the, the consent agenda, that, that eliminates references really to the mayor, because for the most part now, the mayor is not, this, this is trying to handle all the positions that are not police chief, mayor related. So we took that out, so the mayor's name is not really in there anymore in the revision. Sharon, you wanna pass that out? In a revision that says, the mayor would execute it, like he would a contract, like he would anything else that with, with the council's consent, signs off on it. That, that's really the only place now that the mayor comes into this, because we, we wanted to avoid that confusion, that particular confusion. The termination of people that are department heads, they work for, at the will of the city council, not at my will, as in all the agreements that we have, it says if I have troubles with somebody, I make recommendations to you, you guys would then make the decision, and then I would go through the process on your behalf, instead of sitting here in the middle of a meeting trying to do that, if that was, if that was the will of council, then, then it would be taken care of. That, that's really where that comes in, in all instances, it says, trying to say the administrator or slash council, because I'm doing it on, on your behalf, because that's the job description that is there for the administrator.
It is, it's got the change removing the police chief because of the change with the mayor.
So we did that in, in anticipation of saying, hey, the police chief doesn't need to be in this, if there's a separate deal with the police chief, that's 100% fine, because that's the way it will work between the mayor and the chief, and, and, and the council then has all the control over all the other aspects of it. That was, is why we brought that forward.
Are, are you proposing to retroactively put these contracts in place?
Well, there's only-
Nobody has a contract now, right?
Pardon?
Nobody, including you, has a contract.
But we call these employment agreements for a reason, we're, we're only going retroactive to the point of saying what your severance provision. There is no need to go retroactive on everybody else. I mean, it's, it lays out what, it really lays out what most people currently have. The real, the only real change is, as if you go over a certain number of hours, and you use your vacation time during the course of the year, we will pay a portion of that out. That's the only change really compared to, I think, what really happens right now. So this, this is an attempt to, and we saw it firsthand within the last four weeks, people saying, what are their terms and conditions of their employment when they come here? I know Karen asked that of me, I don't know if she asked that of you, and, and I know when I talked at lunch to the other gentleman, those, these kind of things come up when you're looking to hire people at will. They are not protected as you would think of normal employees. Hey, they did, they had three bad reviews in a row, and all of a sudden you say, look, it should be obvious to you that you've, you're gonna be gone. When you're at will, it truly means you're at the will of council at any point in time, you can be gone, and with that, we only think it's fair to be able to say, if indeed you're powerless to stop it, you've invested your time and effort into the city, long-term time and effort, maybe you're a short-term time effort, that at least you know what's gonna happen to you. You will get paid your vacation time that's due to you. You will get a severance package to be determined, either it can be absolute, based on years of service, or it can be determined by city council, but you know there is a severance. Rather than negotiating that at the time somebody would be terminated, they know coming in exactly what's gonna happen to them, which is, I think, fair. The reason you don't see it everywhere is most people do not have their department directors working at will. Most people only have a city manager or administrator working at will within their organizations. So that's why it's a little different for us.
Ms. Mayor, yes, I guess one of the, the questions I have, I looked at the agreement, and I know whenever you signed that agreement, you, we're abiding, you know, by that particular, the things that are in that agreement. My, I guess this is the first I heard, it's for is the severance side of it, and my question is, is that, so are we saying right now, from this time, if we approve this today, that there's going to be a severance situation that's across the board, there are no exceptions or anything unless it comes before this council? Is that what we're looking at, we approved this today?
What we have put in here is, you, you see it says blank for severance, there's a blank as, we'll get X amount of severance. Because in the state of Florida, you cannot give more than 20 weeks.
Right.
End of story.
Yeah.
You can't give more than 20 weeks of severance. What we had proposed with various tiers, but we didn't bring that forward with this, because it was more, do you want this, or we're all tiers, would be the administrator's the highest tier, department heads the next highest tier, 20 weeks maybe the max, 16 weeks maybe for general department heads, and for those people that are not department directors, it may be 12 weeks of severance. That was, that was the intent, to say there's, there's various tiers of people within the city's organization. Not everybody's gonna get 20 weeks, you're not gonna get 20 weeks if you just started, most likely. You know, what, what happens in here?
Aren't you leaving that open, though? I mean, you hand a contract to an employee, I'm coming in here and I'm gonna be the city administrator, and you hand me this contract and says that I can get up to 20 weeks, what am I thinking I'm gonna ask for? Am I gonna ask for 20 weeks?
It's not what you ask for, it's what we will give you.
Well, you're gonna bring each one of these situations back to the council?
I can absolutely put down what-
Doesn't say that.
What we had perceived, we just weren't, we didn't bring it forward, because there were other things in these tiers right now. The tiers that we proposed were 20 weeks for a department head. Not department, 20 weeks for administrator, your highest position in the city. You high, you may have somebody come from out of state, you may have all of these things from someplace, they're coming in to commit to you to go to work, you decide you don't want them fairly quickly, generally they are going to negotiate with you and would be due a severance of some sort. Never seen this time really when you're not. If they're hired, if they are fired for cause, there is no severance. There is no severance for firing for cause. There, I mean, there is, and there is no severance for, I resign and leave. There's no severance in that scenario, it's just when we come up and say, look, this just isn't working out, which is usually the scenario. Very seldom is it so egregious that it's bad, you say, you're criminal, you've got all these offenses against you, it's time to go. Usually it is, this is just not working out, and in that scenario, that's when you generally give a severance to people. We have consistently given severances to people, that's not unusual, this is nothing new, when people have left, if they're deciding not to be here, we have given severances. What we were trying to do with the schedule was more clearly define it, so it was absolute, that if you were at this level, this is what you got, and it wasn't then at somebody's discretion. We're trying to take a lot of that, yeah, we feel sorry for this person, you know, we kinda like that person, whatever, so, that was, that was the intent behind the schedule of, of, of severance.
So is it subjective?
Pardon?
So is it a subjective?
It can be, it always would be.
It always would be.
I mean, it always can be. I think you would do it for folks if you said, look, you've been here for, that the nature of the job is, it's very difficult to find a job doing this in maybe this environment. You'd say the severance would be longer, the time that you would cover them with health insurance would be longer than in a great market where there's jobs galore and people could easily go on and get another job. Or it's a really high-demand job, you know, you say maybe less severance, because, look, you're not gonna be sitting, right? It's not to pay you extra monies, it's to give you the opportunity, when it was pretty much unknown to you, that you're gonna be gone, to go out and find a job.
Yeah, so I guess in, in follow-up on, on the reason I asked that question is that when I, I saw the agreement, I didn't have a problem, because it, you know, had blank lines there, and so, you know, when you get it, it's gonna be, you know, understood when you sign it. If I sign one today, I know what, what it is, but, you know, when we say that it's, it's going to be retroactive, I just want to make sure we have some clarity as to everybody, you know, that falls under that part of it, they know exactly whether it's looking at the tier, or what, how it relates to them, and that's, that's my only reason for asking.
I mean, I think the tier works.
Okay.
I mean, I think the tier works, we didn't include it in this pack, I think the tier works.
Yeah.
Because it talks about healthcare time, and it talks about severance time.
Right.
At the various levels, with the highest, and most time going to your administrator. I'm not worried about that, that's not what, that's not what it's on here, this is trying to prepare for the, the next group of people coming through.
Yes.
Trying to prepare for, we know we're looking at a couple of, at least a singular department head, you're looking at a DVA person or a CRA person. It's really geared toward those, this is not geared towards the current people as much.
Right.
Now, I think it's necessary for them, but it's not geared towards them.
But I spoke to, interviewed both of those people, all those people, and not one person's mentioned a contract. That they desire-
They may not have mentioned it to you, Mr. Sanders, they mentioned it to a couple of people otherwise.
Well, I guess if you bring something up, it would. I have problems-
Was it brought up, it was brought up by them?
I have problems that you hand this to them, and they say, you say, Rick, take this home and read it, it's not gonna come back double in size after the attorney gets a hold of it.
This has been through our-
Well, I understand, whereas you say it's been through, but that, if I'm gonna be a new employee at the city of Bradenton, I'm asked to sign this, I may take it to my lawyer, and it may come back with, I would negotiate-
If you're a new employee and we ask you to sign this, my recollection is you're gonna sign this, or you probably won't be the new employee.
So you're gonna threaten them with this?
I think you say this is the terms and agreement that you are signing on with the city of Bradenton, so you know exactly what the deal is when you come in. If, if you want to negotiate a different deal with them, then they would be negotiating that with you directly, as a council. I would say otherwise, these are the terms and conditions that all the rest of our employees that are in your situation are agreeing to.
Ms. Rol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when this first came up a long time ago, I was a little leery of it, because I thought it was singling out department heads getting more protection than others. It seems like, through talking to you, it's getting, I'm not as concerned about that as, as, as I was, so, and I understand, you know, we certainly want to be able to hire good people and retain them. I do, and then the, I did have some concerns about the contract I read, but your revised edition has, has addressed those, so I feel comfortable about that. I, I do wanna point out that in all the years that I've been here since 2006, this doesn't really mean anything, it's just a blank statement, the city council has never directed anybody or decided to terminate any department head. Am I, did I, did I miss something there? I mean, we, we haven't done that, right?
No, you've not.
The city council did not say, fire that person. So that's, so we got, that's fine, so I, I think that's what we're dealing with, that, you know, termination, it's not really an issue, but it potentially could be, but it's really not.
I think termination, sometimes we get the wrong interpretation. Termination is you leave your employment with the city of Bradenton. You may leave under various scenarios. Termination just means you, you're, everybody who doesn't retire terminates from the city of Bradenton at some point.
Right. Well, and, and, okay, so, so I, I know that there had been a few firings years ago, but they were not at the direction of city council. It was an administrative decision.
Yeah, see resignation is a terminate, you're terminating your employment.
Okay.
And that's not, doesn't qualify for anything when you resign, it's just saying, here's-
And then, so, so moving, so, better with that, the only, the only thing I see left is we keep using the city administrator, city administrator, city administrator, when I think we said probably with the new council, we're gonna discuss, you know, whether, whether that position continues. We, we, look, we're either gonna have to fill it, or, and, and also, you know, there's probably discussion as to whether we go back to the old model or we didn't have one.
In most instances, we tried to say administrator or council.
Okay.
But now, part of that was because there are certain positions that were not subject to council's oversight, but it can still apply. Now, if we sit there and say, you decide you don't want to, this is an easy revision, we don't have an administrator, city council will assume those responsibilities, or somebody else will, that's, that's an easy change. This is not gonna make sure that you have to have a city administrator, because we have signed these agreements with various employees.
And that's not, and I'm not proposing that, that I have a, an opinion on that one or the other, I just wanna have a debate on that.
Right.
So, anyway, that's, that's kind of the stuff that, that I saw, is that I did have concerns, and I certainly, your revised edition addressed probably, it was a good, it was a good revised edition.
We thought about that going, okay, this creates some confusion, the mayor even said, you know, does, do we want it this way, is this, does this, I don't wanna be in the middle of where I'm trying to say grace over things that I don't really say grace over, so he brought that up as well. So we did get some clarity at the election point in time, we know exactly where it was going, we didn't know where it was gonna be when we started writing this. It could have been that y'all had everything, you know, so, but it didn't turn out that way, so we said, let's, it's easy, let's just eliminate those references that would reference police and the mayor in there, let's get it out of there, that's not, that's not what we're trying to do.
Ms. Barbie?
There's a, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. When I was going through this, and, and looking at it and reading it, several things came to mind. One is, I think that this is going to assist us in being more professional in how we approach our senior staff, department heads, whatever level you, you want to use this with, and I think that's very important, particularly now that we're in the middle of this pandemic, and we're going to be trying to recruit people to uproot their families and come here if they don't happen to be within a certain mile radius of, of the city. I think it will give them a layer of comfort, knowing what is expected of them, and, and what they can count on at any particular point in time. I think it, it also provides us a lot of protection for our citizens, for the city, as far as, again, I hadn't really thought about what happens if someone leaves the city and then decides they're gonna set up a, some sort of consulting firm, and they wanna come in and poach employees. I mean, that's a problem. And I also remember, at one point in time in this city, our department heads never knew at the end of the year if they had a job until the first meeting in January, and I thought that was wrong then, and I think it's wrong now. I think if we want to have professional individuals working hard for the city and being loyal to our citizens, we need to be professionals as well, and I see this as a way to, to help do that.
And again, as Mr. Callahan said, this is not a contract, it's an employee agreement. There's, there is a distinction there.
I mean, I had a contract at the end, in this exact lame duck, so to speak, scenario, when council was, new council was coming in, Ms. Barbie, I think maybe was coming in, or you may have been the next, was coming in, I think, and they, we all got five-year contracts. Those were very onerous contracts, those were contracts- Those were contracts that said, you have employment for five years. And technically, you probably would have tried to negotiate a settlement agreement like it's all the professional athletes. But it said, you have employment for five years. And it didn't provide for these terms like this. It just said, you got five years. And if we want you gone, we'll pay you five years.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And, and this is, that was the last time that came up. Those ran their course and, and they were, they were gone and nobody's ever operated under that scenario since. But as we see and we're looking for these jobs, we're seeing and hearing things. We are competing for these folks. We are out there competing for, for hopefully the best and the brightest. And when, when you've got to have a, a, like you said, professionalism that, that shows that you're in that ballgame, we, we need to do that. And, and I think this is a first step towards that. When they say, well, what, what are the terms of the agreement? Well, here they are. They're laid out.
If you think other communities don't do something like this, you'd be wrong.
This is a hybrid of Manatee Counties, I think Sarasota's, and the ICMA. The ICMA, and, and I'll be very clear, if you guys go to hire a new administrator, there are many more things in an administrator's contract than, than this. This is a very, this is a employment agreement like for an administrator. Because there are a lot of other terms and conditions for administrators that are, that will be out there when, if, when you guys do that search for a new one. It, it'll be probably, the administrator will probably come out of this and go into a, probably go into a separate agreement, most likely. Because there's many more things that you will, would most likely have to do to attract one this day and age.
I was just handed this revision. I haven't had time to read it. So I would like to have time to read it. And like I said, there's some points in here. I don't disagree that some of this is good stuff. But there's some, some changes that we haven't had in the past that, that's maybe in here that I think the council needs to have serious thought about. So I'd like to table this until either the next meeting or the first meeting in January.
So that's a motion?
That's a motion.
I don't have a, a problem with that, since we have a brand new document. But, yeah, I, I do know that, that, as I said, my concerns have been mostly addressed. So if the, if the council wants, we can bring, we can bring this up. I, I think we'd probably do it in the next meeting. Did, did you say this would affect the CRA position? Because that's technically not a city position, or is it?
No, I would think you probably want to do it, the CRA would probably want to do it for their executive director, but it doesn't, this is the city that's requesting this.
I think it's important to be consistent.
Although they are going to be a city employee.
Right.
So that is true. They are going to be a city employee. So yes, I guess it probably would affect the CRA.
Well, then why, why don't we just say, we'll have this till the next meeting? Because that's hopeful, I, we'll see what the next meeting, the CRA meeting looks like. But that person might be starting in December. Would you be okay with bringing this up? Or I, Mr. Bird?
I guess it's probably already, so I was going to say, you know, we, we had, I guess he was making most of the table and we didn't get a second. But I, you know, I would prefer, I agree, if, if it's okay with you, just bring it to the next meeting. That's the best way, in my opinion.
Well, I don't, I don't, we've waited a long time to be able to get something like this in place, and I think it's necessary. I mean, we, we brought it up before. It was just a case that it felt like most of the things had been, had been gone over. So it was okay to bring it forward again. That, that's not a problem. My, my preference is to get it on board for folks. Because I think as you go through your searches, you're going to, you're going to want.
It's going to be a recruitment tool. I think it will give people some.
Like, I, I'd be willing to approve this today, but it seems like it would be prudent possibly to do it the next meeting. So, so if you, if you know where I'm leaning.
I just have one question, and it's sort of, here we go wearing two hats again. My concern is, is that I, I realize in another meeting that there is a, a certain, I guess we're trying to look at hiring someone in that, in a certain position. And the only thing, my suggestion is, is that today, if we're going to push this to the next meeting, since we should probably have a CRA, a special meeting on that same day too. If, if not already scheduled, you know, so that that can be handled, you know.
Okay.
Once we do that.
Just to, to be clear, you really can't negotiate, I'm, I'm not on the CRA, so.
Right, right.
You can't negotiate with that person until you know if you got this or you don't have. So by waiting, you're putting off that decision as well, and that person's decision.
All, oh.
Just a thought.
Yeah. And I, I guess all due respect, I, I realize that the, the, those, I guess the interviews took place on yesterday. And the way that I understand things usually go is probably, I, I don't want to get ahead of another meeting. But usually what I've seen happen is, is that there's a vote to say, let's enter into negotiations. And then, this is an employee, employment agreement, once that comes back and is offered. But you, as a CRA board, once you go out, you're going to have to offer that, you know.
Once we get to the CRA, and I was just looking at it, my guess is you would tailor this similar agreement to the CRA. Because what you would say is, it's subject, even though it's a city employee, you are still reporting to the CRA board. It is not city council. So we would probably tailor a couple, a couple of words in here that would reflect that your bosses basically are the board and not the city council.
Well, the administrator would probably.
Or the administrator. You know what I mean? It's, yes. So we would tailor it to say, all these other terms and conditions, but how you report, which is a critical component of, everybody knows how they report. This is saying it would be the, we would, we would tailor it to say it is the CRA agency board of directors.
Okay. And, and not getting ahead of ourselves. Our next meeting is December 15th and the. Huh?
CRA is also.
And so, and, and we would want to have that meeting the same, because that would be the only meeting for the month. And I do know that when we discuss, the, the person that we're talking about did want to give notice to, if that moves forward to the employer. So there's a few weeks lapsed there. So I, I see this all coming together. Like I said, I, I, I had issues. I was not comfortable with it. The, this, this address changes that. So I'm willing to move forward. I'm also don't see any problem in waiting. I, I don't see where 30 days is going to, is going to kill us to make everyone comfortable. Okay.
There are a lot of things that we will wait patiently a long time for. You know what I mean? The good things that, that we think we need to do.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Well, you had a table. It didn't get anywhere, but I think it's just a case of saying, council, it seems like council's desires to bring this back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Which is fine.
I want to be clear on one thing here, because the, our labor attorney is the one that really wrote this initially, some time back. But one of the things, I talked to Greg Herring this week, who's Thompson-Sizemore, one of the best labor attorneys in the country. And they represent the City of Bradenton. And I just want to be clear that this does not apply to the police chief. Because he said he had never contemplated it would apply to the police chief. Because under the charter, the charter, police chief works at will for the mayor. And that's what the charter says. And that latest referendum we had says that still. So I just want, I just want to be clear, this is about department heads, the exception to the police chief.
And, and that's why the clarification.
That's why the clarification.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
So we taking care of item A on the consent agenda that we're going to have a meeting at the next one? Everybody in agreement with that?
It is, it is my understanding this will be brought back to the December meeting and a decision will be made then. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
This is my assumption as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Dispassion?
We have no business advertising petitions, hearings, and communications, so we can go on to the new business. I believe city administrator, Mr. Callahan, has a presentation on the Bradenton Riverwalk expansion contracts.
The process associated with moving forward on the Riverwalk was, first, we went out for RFP to decide who we wanted to be our construction manager for the Riverwalk extension. NDC Construction was selected for that. We are still in process of finalizing, final drawings and construction documents associated with that through Kimley-Horn in concert with NDC. So what happens next is you need to get NDC under contract. And what we presented to you today are two different versions of an AIA standard architect's engineers contract that says, hey, these are the normal standard terms and conditions associated with, with a construction manager at risk type contract. Goes through everything that you could possibly imagine that can come up and how you deal with them. There are a couple of key items that you want to focus on, on that. And one is, this is where you determine how much you're going to pay them. Not how much the project is going to cost, because the GMP will come after we've, we've signed any contracts. They then are responsible to bring back to you a guaranteed maximum price, which you will agree on or not agree on, but we will at some point agree that that is going to be the guaranteed maximum price for the project. And then some of the things in this contract that are based on that. So what, there's two components that are, that are critical. It lists out all the insurances that you have to have to make sure they're all there. Who accepts the risk on certain things like that. But also, in, in the area of compensation, they are requesting 5.5% as a, as their, as their overhead, their profit number is 5.5%. Just as a comparison, we looked at Streetscape. That was 6%. That is the same range that we've done a lot of our projects over the years is in the 5%, 5 to 6% range. So it is not unusual to see that number. I believe it's a, it's a good number to be at. When I was negotiating with Ron, I said, they're at 6. I think you need to be less. Yes, you're right. I need to be less. Yeah, so that's, that's just the nature of kind of the way things work. That's what the market is. So we're comfortable with that. Also in there is a component of pre, pre-construction costs. They are out doing work for us right now, of which they are not being compensated for. So in there is a component that says there is a small percent, a 0.5 of 1% cost of a contract for pre-construction services. If it's a $7 million project, that would be $35,000 for all the services they're doing until they get ready to go and actually get under contract for, for future. We're committing to that for the, what the work that they're doing without being, charging us for it up to this point. That is fairly standard. You either do a percent of the job or you just do a flat number. When I reviewed the Streetscape contract, I believe we are in the $50,000 range for pre-construction services for that job. So again, 35,000 or that whereabouts, depending on where the GMP comes in, I think it's fairly reasonable for pre-construction services. Other than that, it's a, it's a standard contract. The other is the, the second piece, what is the? What is it? Overhead? What is the second? There's two of them. I just lose, losing the top. I'm getting old.
I don't have it for me. I thought I did.
No, no.
Standard electronic. General conditions, standard.
General conditions.
General conditions.
The general conditions layout, again, how things operate through the course of the construction project. It doesn't, it's not determining what it costs you or anything else. It's just laying out standard terms and conditions. Again, since Scott and his group had an inherent conflict because of NDC, we took this out to Becky Vos, our conflict attorney. She reviewed it all, said it's in keeping. It's, it's fine. She had actually requested something that none of us had seen before, which was fine. I mean, we've done a lot of AIA contracts. I talked to Mr. Allen about it, and, and we certainly do it. But the additions and deletions report is something that generally gets passed over. She was going through due diligence and said, hey, if I'm going to approve this, I need to see your additions and deletions report and have it signed by Mr. Allen, which we did have done. But I had not seen that in, in all the contracts I'd reviewed and ever seen it asked for, which is great, knowing that that's what we were getting. Becky works out great for us. I, I sent her an email saying, can you review this? We have a meeting on Wednesday. Can you get to it? Immediately jumps on it and takes care of it. No reflection on me, Scott. So it was great to make sure that we could have it reviewed prior to this meeting. So we're recommending approval at those rates and, and under those terms and conditions with the understanding that we still have a GMP yet to get. I asked him if, if he knew or he could be, have any conversation with Kimley-Horn as to when they thought they'd be in a, in a position to bring forward a GMP. Ron, did you get any?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Ron Allen, NDC Construction. Yeah, we spoke to Kimley-Horn. We've been working with Kimley-Horn since there are about 60% drawings. We actually have run one full budget estimate on those 60%. We went back and sat, talked about a few things of where we might bring some numbers down and, and do things a little differently to try to keep the cost down. And they went back and drawn. We are anticipating getting 90 to 95% drawings at the end of next week. But being Thanksgiving, it may be the first of the following week. And that will allow us to have a GMP back to you, the guaranteed maximum price, probably before Christmas. So we're looking at, it'll probably be after the 15th meeting that I heard you say you have. But it'll be prior to the end of the year. We'll actually have the GMP document that will guarantee the price for, based on the 90 to 95% drawings.
And Ron, can you fill them in? Because, you know, it sounds like we're, we're, we're taking a long time to get to this point. But once we started, once we get ready to go with construction, you'd indicate you thought it would be a pretty quick process to be able to do.
Yeah, I mean, the, the answer is, we're not building a lot of vertical structures. And as we go through the process, we're still, Kimley-Horn is still working with Army Corps on the, what we'll call the boardwalk features that may lag a little bit behind. But most of the material, because it's more work material than it is, it's moving dirt and doing those kind of things as opposed to long lead items like air conditioners and those kind of things. So we think other than the, the boardwalk portion, we should be able to get started with that project as quickly as you all approve the GMP and, and we can get everything mobilized. So we would expect that could even be as early as maybe mid to end of January, beginning of February if, if some of the permits get finished up, so.
And then you said actual construction, other than being held out by something like the boardwalk and Army Corps. The actual physical construction is not that long.
No, actually, yeah, we should be done by the fall of, of '21. Again, other than the boardwalk situation, for the phases that we're going to GMP for, there's actually a, a couple phases or one phase that, or two phases that may not be included in that GMP because their drawings have not been committed to by the council yet. Those are more further west of the start of the project.
I just realized, I was looking at the wrong calendar. I was looking at '21. And the 20, 20 is, the next meeting's on the 16th. So you just got an extra day. Can you get done by then?
I'm not sure. I, well, that would have to be up to Kimley-Horn as to when we get the drawings. But the fact that we have Thanksgiving coming up and then getting into the Christmas season, I'd be hard pressed to, to think that I might get all my numbers put together for a final GMP that we would sign off on before that time. But thank you.
Well, what I'm getting at too with this is, we get a GMP, we're then not sitting around for, I mean, we have seen some things like, like the fire station, how long it takes to get from where we think we're ready to go to actually being going. I think to say that once we get ready to go, we're going to be able to go, you'll see dirt being moved and you'll see a significant difference over there pretty quickly.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sooner the better.
Thank you, Mr. Al.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Farby?
Mr. Callahan, did you have anything else to add?
No, just requesting your approval.
At this point in time, I'd like to move that we approve the Bradenton Riverwalk expansion contracts as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, we have. Our proposed, I sat with you on this, proposed is about, this is about $8 million. Is that correct?
The, the original.
On the 60% plans?
The original proposal was eight something, okay? We looked back at it and said, we think there's some things through, through getting through the drawings that can maybe bring it back, back closer to the seven, not committing to that. Because one thing I don't want to do with, what I want to make sure we do is set a good budget that we can live by, that, and everybody's satisfied with what we're getting. And if, we're only under our own constraints because the nature of the funds we're using. You know, if you have a bond, you're limited by the bond and you probably shouldn't do more than that. And this is.
In this instance, our only limitations is your desire to spend sales tax money, investor or developers' money, impact fee money. So you can create the job you want to create. If you feel like the numbers are high and you don't want to spend that money, that's a little too much, that's fine. If there's components that you really like, just say, all you have to do is what you've always said, Carl, go find me the money. And finding the money will be in sales tax, those kind of things. If you go into another year, a partial use of sales tax. So to me, it's going to be more important, the number is the number that, what they bring you, but what is the project you want to see? That's going to be the most critical thing.
This contract is, is this written by Kimley-Horn or?
That's a standard, that's, that's a form that is used by all construction managers, architects and engineers. It is a, that's why they call it a standard AIA contract.
You think you can get it any smaller?
Well, it's guaranteed you can't read it.
There's 35 pages that I can't read. And if you, if you put it on a, in a standard format, it'd probably be 150 pages. So I hope you don't expect everybody to strain their, I'm getting a little older and I can't do anymore.
What we hope to do with that is that you will read the 5.5%, you will read the .5%.
Yeah, I got that.
And, and you will assume that our lawyers and their lawyers know to make sure that there's nothing in there that, that should be not in there, that's standard for the industry. The, the industry may pull one over on us, but it's standard for the industry.
This is a standard AIA form that I've seen used when I worked at the Builders Exchange back in 1985. I'm sure they've been updated, but this is a, this is the standard by which most construction projects are done.
You, you use this or you do your own very specific contract, which can be an unbelievable amount of time trying to create a contract that you're then tailoring to your project, which then you're negotiating everything.
That's the good thing about electronic documents. You can always enlarge them.
Bill, as you get older, you can't read that finer print, but if they're making bigger print, you can't pick up the document.
Right.
So, one or two.
Uh, that's, that's all I have.
I know what to get you for Christmas now, one of those light up magnifying glasses like I have.
I need a cap so I can bring it in here.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Braden Riverwalk Expansion Contract. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Word two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Braden Riverwalk Expansion Contract's approved, the vote is five to zero. Ms. Callahan? Ms. Julian?
This request that, for vacation payouts is, as you know, you have limits on, on most every folks as to how much vacation you can carry over from year to year. And, and this year has been a rather unusual year. This, this initially started out from the Police Department as a request back in September to saying that they had been through a lot of, we'd been through COVID for six or seven months. We had been through some of the civil unrest during some parts of the summertime or fall. And that was the inability to allow people to get away for vacations. And what they would do is they would run up against the limits and then you would lose it at the end. So what we did instead is looking at the Police Department, we looked at all the departments and said, how are they being impacted? With the biggest impact being on your public safety departments, police and fire departments, that, that they potentially would lose hours based on this. Our consideration when we said, can we pay it out was twofold. One is can we afford it? Okay? Because I can't sit there and straight face say, yes, we need to pay this, but if we don't have the funds to do it, then, then it doesn't make any sense. So what I did is I had to wait until we've got most of our numbers in, almost all of our numbers come in from last year and is pleasantly surprised at how well we did. From disaster to being in good financial position when we come out of this year, not thinking what's going to happen for, for this 2021, but 1920, revenues were held pretty strong with the exceptions of the one the state cut. Expenses, we underspent across the board. So we were, so we were good from that. So with that, I felt comfortable making the recommendation that we pay these out. There's also another caveat, that if we pay these, if we don't pay them out and all we do is say, oh, just carry over more hours, all we're doing is the same thing over again. We're still in a position where people are not really being able to get away. They're still accumulating lots of hours and we'll be right back in the situation or we'll also be in the situation where we'll be paying overtime to cover people getting away. So this appears to be the best way to go ahead and handle that as a one-time deal, no guarantees in the future, which we're going to try to make sure everybody signs a document to that effect, that they understand that, because I don't want it coming back saying, well, you did it last year, therefore I couldn't, I didn't take any of my vacation time. It's only going to happen with your approval.
I have a question. An employee come to me and indicated that we weren't allowing them to use their vacation time and that they had, had to push this down to the end, is, is that?
That's exactly what this is taking care of.
Okay. But, but why wouldn't we allow them to take vacation?
You couldn't get away. If you don't have staffing and manpower and we have COVID and we have storms, you call all people in, I'm sorry, all vacations are canceled. If we have shortage of manpower as due to COVID, you've got to work. So yeah, you, you can't take it. I mean, we're, we're in that situations quite a lot, unfortunately. We don't like to do that because if you noticed in the agreement that I put in there, in the, in the employment agreement, it said you got to take at least 80 hours of vacation going forward to be able to carry it over because we want you to make sure you take vacation. It's healthy, it's the thing to do. People not taking vacation is not healthy for our employees, particularly in those public safety scenarios where mental health is critical to be able to get away. So we don't like it that we're in that position, but we are, and in this case, we don't want them to lose their time, but carrying it over is just not an answer that's going to help us as, as a city, so.
I'm not suggesting you carry it over.
No, so we're recommending that we pay it out, this one-time payout. Like I said, we reviewed the funding, the funding is available from us through the departments to be able to carry, cover that. Even in the contingency funds, we weren't having to go into the contingency funds because the financials turned out strong enough to, to be able to cover this.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion and then make a statement. I would like to authorize the, make a motion to authorize the one-time payment of vacation hours to those employees over their maximum limit. And the comment I would like to make is that I find it incredibly gratifying that our citizens are served by employees that are that loyal. That, I mean, this pandemic has been crazy, hard, so difficult to deal with. And then we've had storm and storm and, and I, I just find it, again, very gratifying and I'm very grateful that we have employees that take their, their duties and take their, their loyalty to the city and the way that, that they choose to do their job to protect our citizens. I, I think it speaks volumes. And I think that this is the least that we can do.
We have a motion, we have a second? Okay.
Carl, how quickly will you be able to get this to, because what I'm thinking is it'd be nice to get them to them before Christmas?
Well, they're getting them before Christmas.
December 2nd payroll, if we can get all of the employees on board.
That'd be a nice, I mean, it'd be, we want them to take their vacation time. If we can hand them some money just before Christmas, that's going to make some mamas happy.
We would have brought it forward earlier and, and the chief was on me to try, yeah, but I, I felt, said I really need to look a, a better feel for the numbers financially before we just absolutely commit to it. But, but we were in good shape, so. Ms. Mr. Callahan?
In December, is there any way for Councilman Byrd and the mayor, Jean Gala, to apply for any of that vacation funding payout?
We are going to pay you all the vacation that you are entitled to. It's kind of like the mayor's story when he steps up at the Pirates Boosters and is going to, but you're going to give them a raise? Or whatever, when they don't get paid, so it's like, okay.
I was telling, we're going to double their salary.
Double their salary.
And give us a car.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second to pay a one-time special exception on vacation payout. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Word three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Motion is approved, votes five to zero. Any unfinished business, Ms. Bozian?
No, sir.
Uh, council reports, Mr. Gala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keep it short. One of the most important announcements is that Manti High School started their soccer season and they beat Sarasota four to three and my grandson scored one of the goals, so it's important to put out. Also, I'd like to wish everybody to a blessed and very, very safe Thanksgiving with your families. And then I'm going to ask if in fact I could get some, some good thoughts, some concerns from everybody here. My wife's brother and sister are deathly ill with COVID and four of the members of that family also have COVID out in Louisiana. And just keep them in your thoughts, they need it. I appreciate it and God bless everybody.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to wish everyone, from my family to yours, a very happy Thanksgiving. It may not be the Thanksgiving that you're used to, but I think if we're healthy, giving thanks is a good thing.
Thank you. Ms. Rolfe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A couple of my items got taken care of already. That's a good thing. Changing of the new times. One of my favorite things to do in the past was to watch the space shuttle launches and I was able to go out on my front porch and watch over Where's Creek and watch the shuttle go off, especially at nighttime, it was the most fascinating. And I noticed that there was a SpaceX launch just recently, just a couple nights ago. And lo and behold, I was not sure whether I was going to be able to see that or not and I was able to view it from, from the shores of Where's Creek. And it was quite, not as bright as the, the shuttle, but, but it's spectacular. You could see the trail at one point in time, you did see where the booster let off. And what I did notice was it was faster. The old, the old launch, I used to have like about, oh, three or four minutes from launch time to where it was in the horizon and it was almost instantly and it was out of view and probably, shoot, I, I mean, it, it was very, very brief, maybe 60 seconds where the, the old launch, the old shuttles were, was kind of a slow, kind of a slow clog up to space. So anyway, it's, uh, changing times. We're now returning, and, and the, and the booster rockets came back to earth and landed on a barge, just like spa, or, or was it Buck, Buck Jordan? Who was that?
Buck Rogers?
Buck Rogers, you know, where this rocket comes down backwards and lands, looked impossible. It actually just happened.
Enjoy that because that was under a Republican administration.
Private enterprise. It's Elon Musk.
Under a Republican administration.
Mr. Rolfe, that's the difference between private enterprise doing something and government doing it. It's much faster.
It was.
Actually, if you, it really is, because if you watch the NASA.
Yes.
Countdown is about 30 seconds behind the SpaceX. So if you watch the actual SpaceX countdown, which Mr. Lish had on, we were both down at the river watching it. It's like, oh, it's fixing to go off. He goes, no, it just went off. Don't trust NASA, SpaceX had it right.
I don't have anything to report, just happy Thanksgiving to all of our employees and happy Thanksgiving to all the citizens and be safe.
Ms. Byrd?
Well, I guess first of all, I'd like to offer prayers to your family. Jean, it's, sometimes we hear all the news about COVID-19 and everything, but I know even in my family and friends, we've had people that have been affected. So prayers go out to you and your, your family at this time. On a different note, I'd like to wish a happy Thanksgiving to everyone and please be safe during the holidays. It's going to be a, a little bit different than it was, say, last Thanksgiving and many of you, whether we hear everything about Zoom Thanksgiving and virtual Thanksgiving and all we pray and ask is that everyone try to be as safe as possible and try to get through this. And the last thing I just want to say is I sent out a, a email, as you know, and thankful to City of Bradenton. And finally, something that I live in, those of you who know me, I've lived in the same neighborhood all my life and we've had some flooding issues and we're doing a massive construction project on the road. And I thought that last two days, I might not have been able to get out of the driveway, but everything worked out today. But I, I want to say that it's come along great on that project and thanks to Public Works and the contractor and sales tax, infrastructure dollars, it's tax revenues at work. And hopefully around about February, that'll be complete. We'll no longer be here, but we, we'd like to say that that's tax dollars at work and it's going along fine. Nothing else to report, happy Thanksgiving.
On a sad note, we had a funeral Monday. Chief Michael Adzalowski, who served the City of Bradenton as police chief for 14 years, died of cancer and is buried as a former veteran in, as a veteran in Sarasota Memorial. So, a nice funeral, sad to lose Raz. He was a wonderful man, a terrific sense of humor, never met a stranger and served the city well for, for a long time. Personally and professionally, we were very, very close, so it's a sad time. On the other side, welcome, I want to thank everybody and hope you have a great, great Thanksgiving. I noticed in the grocery stores, the turkeys are smaller this year. I thought that sort of interesting, but. Hope we have a, hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving. And again, please stay safe, this, we're not out of this thing yet. I know we're all tired of wearing these masks, but they protect you and they protect other people, so it's worth the effort. And with that, we'll go to department head reports. Ms. Bozian, you had a handout?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Actually, on the heels of, of what Council Mark, Councilwoman Barnaby announced, I just want to publicly thank my employees and the city employees that gave up their Veterans Day holiday this last week to come out and serve the city during the storm. It was a very quick turnaround. They left here on Tuesday night thinking everything was fine and Wednesday morning, a lot of people got calls that they were going to have to come in and work on their holiday and did so selflessly. And I, I just want to publicly thank all of them for, for, for taking care of that. It was much appreciated. That's all I have.
And Ms. Bozian, I'd like to second that. All the city employees, one of the things that I've done since I've been mayor is on every city employee's anniversary, I send them a card and I sign every one of them, I don't use a stamp, thanking them for their service to the City of Bradenton. I only bring that up because I finished doing that as mayor this week. I did my last group that I'm sending out to employees, so those of you in here who are employees, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Bozian, I received your report and it's very impressive. I like what you've got in there. Something that caught my attention was approximately 40,000 attempts came in from hostile foreign nations to, that, that, that's not into our city, is it?
Yes. Attempts. Those are attempts, those are attempts.
Our attempts.
Can we clarify, that's IT, that I didn't have somebody marching down Manti Avenue, please?
Right. Yep. So we haven't discussed it very much, but my account was hacked in the city, went out to hundreds of people asking for their passwords or whatever, so just be cautious, don't believe everything you see or hear. It's not necessarily true. And I know last Christmas, the mayor texts me and asked me for $900. He wanted one, nine $100 gift certificates. Go to Walgreens, pick them up. I said, sure. I texted him back. He says, I'll pay you back. I know where you live, I collect it. And I came real close to doing it. But I wouldn't have get, read the code on the back to, to the person, I would have handed it to him and he'd say, what the heck are you doing? So that happens, but I, they're very convincing. These, these people are professional hackers and how they get in, I don't know. And I've personally been hacked, that's gotten involved in a lawsuit, that's just a clear misunderstanding of what the facts were. And I want to say that just, just be careful. And I, I haven't really noticed much of that until. just, uh, just be careful. And I, I haven't really noticed much of that until, uh, I've worked here in the city, but it seems like they attack, uh, government employees maybe more so. And I don't know if they're trying to get to the funds or what they're doing, but just be very, I, I didn't think I had to be that cautious, but I tell you what, it's, it's, it's now happened three times to me and, uh, only since I've been here. So, we are, we are very highly sought after to hack.
I pre, oh, sorry.
And share something with you, uh, that you might enjoy. You know the name Bobby Blaylock? Uh, he's one of the owners of, of the law firm that we do business with. Last year, I received a message from him requesting $5,000 that he was, uh, somewhere out of the United States and in a jam and needed the money. And would I be glad to give it to him. So, I told him absolutely yes. Yes, you've been a friend for years. And by the way, since you just walked past the front of my house, because he lives in my neighborhood, I said, on your way back, I'll give you the cash. And I never heard from the guy again.
End of that conversation there.
I was just going to mention, um, the next line in the newsletter talking about 10,000 fishing attempts against City of Bradenton employee email addresses. Those are things that are stopped either by IT or by employees themselves, recognizing that these things just don't look right and they report those to IT. And Councilman Sanders and I were speaking the other day, um, when he was saying, how can this be happening? Well, one of the, the beauties of the Sunshine Law and Public Records Law is that we get record requests frequently for all City of Bradenton email addresses.
Right.
We don't have the ability to ask, why do you need this? We don't have the ability to say, who are you? We have to provide those email addresses and sometimes very legitimate, I'm sure, but we also have to provide them to anybody who asks, meaning they may not be necessarily legitimate. And then they go from there and they try and, and spoof our employees into clicking on things they shouldn't in order to get into our network or to, you know, unfortunately, you know, worse than that. So, um, Chris likes to put these in the newsletter every month just to keep you up to date. We now have a, a network security administrator in Jeremiah who spends all of his time trying to protect the city. Um, but I think they will all tell you it's up to the employees to protect the city more so than IT. They can only do so much, but we count on 500 people to make sure they're not clicking on the wrong things. So, and they are very tricky. They make them look very legitimate and, and, you know, we do the best we can. We hope that people will ask IT before they click on something. And, um, but that's the, that's the reason for him putting this in here, just to bring awareness. So, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you. Is, is that something that legislature has looked at, Scott, that, I mean, I mean, like those, the blank request of, with, with an unknown, that looks like that ought to be exempt?
I'm not aware of them having looked at that issue. I mean, it's, it's obviously something every local government deals with. Um, but I, I don't see them changing that aspect of it. I just, you know, they're very proud of their open records laws, uh, state of Florida.
That they impose on us.
That, that they are exempt from.
Correct.
Yeah, I would, I would suspect if they did that, they would just say that legislature, anybody that's a legislature, email this, uh, you know, and everybody else we can go after.
Maybe I, I ask for some funding to monitor that.
Okay.
Wouldn't get that either, would we?
I might could put you in touch with that Nigerian prince that keeps sending me stuff. Maybe he has the money for it.
I keep getting widows from, uh, the Russia area.
Uh, just a couple of things. On behalf of Public Works, um, thank you to council for, uh, for the vacation payout. That will be greatly appreciated by our staff. Um, just some numbers associated with, uh, the storm. Um, we passed out just shy of 1,300 sandbags. Um, we continue to receive lots of, um, compliments from folks related to the efficiency of the operation that we utilize. Um, and, uh, we take great pride in that. So, uh, we have to turn away a lot of people who, uh, don't live in the city who like the idea of somebody putting the bags in their car for them. So, um, that's beneficial. I expected to come in on Thursday morning following the storm and find all of our Christmas decorations gone. I was happy to hear that only three fell down. Um, we have about 180 on the poles. So, uh, that was a refreshing, uh, find in the morning. Um, and most of the decorations are being laid out this week. Uh, and you'll see that we'll be, uh, firing them up, um, by, uh, hopefully before the, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that they'll be up and running. And, uh, I would also encourage anybody who hasn't been down to Main Street at night, uh, to come down and check out the new street, uh, the new lights in the trees. Um, we did a punch, punch list walkthrough, um, earlier this, uh, last week and identified a couple of places where we have some additional strands of light that we want to put up and a couple of additional trees that we're going to hit to make it even more impressive. But, uh, I think it presents a, a really stunning, uh, view for the downtown area. So, I'm.
Yeah, they, they really look great. Terrific.
So, um, that coupled with the, the holiday decorations, I think it'll be a really, uh, something to celebrate this year because, man.
Mr. McCollum, the lights are absolutely beautiful and coming from one person who one year tried to string lights up in some of the trees personally, yours are much better.
Uh, they're much better and, uh, our biggest bane in life are squirrels. They like to chew on the wires apparently for some reason.
Okay, if, if, and I don't know, before you put them up, if you can get some sort of cayenne pepper paste. Squirrels have saliva. They don't like spicy food. I put cayenne pepper on my bird feeder and the squirrels leave it alone.
I'll, I'll be happy to give that a thought.
I mean, it's, it's a thought.
Uh, just one comment from Jim's perspective. You know, we may have, and when I was walking the streets, I, I heard some folks talking and it was the perfect storm. Literally, it came and, and went over a holiday. And the only thing I really heard about was there are people, particularly in our neighborhood, that were one of the first pickups at 6:30 in the morning. Well, it was too windy to put them out at night still.
Yes.
And with solid waste coming through first thing in the morning, the one thing we may look at is if we catch this scenario again, maybe trying to start a little late. The trouble is the time change gets us this late.
Yes.
Earlier in the summer, it may be a lot easier, but to, to start, uh, an hour or two later, giving people the opportunity to roll those things out first thing in the morning when they get up. Because there were a lot that sat over the weekend because a Thursday pickup
Yeah.
Didn't happen. And they thought we just didn't pick it up. And in essence, we've been through the neighborhood already. We were still getting right on the, get on the pickups at our normal, normal pickup time.
Yeah, you get 6:30, I get 6:00. Just so you know.
You've got anything?
I'm going to change that code. It'll stop that.
Just for, for a second, it's easier to speak up here. Uh, just want to say thank you for y'all's response with the storm last week and really declaring a state of emergency has come second nature to everybody. But, um, we end up working over at Emergency Management. So, anytime the city has a need, I know Sharon monitors, uh, but, you know, feel free to call. And, uh, we're staffing, uh, if not 24 hours over there, but most of the night during the event. Um, uh, so everything went well on our end. I mean, we did run probably, you know, three times the amount of rescue calls and fire alarms and fire incidents that we normally do. Uh, but that's, uh, that's expected during an event like that. Um, so anyways, just wanted to give you an update on that. And COVID, you know, maintaining that 7% positivity rate. And y'all have already discussed that on the changes and we're keeping up the fight there. Uh, but anyways, uh, we appreciate all the, uh, uh, different departments in the city. Whenever we call, all hours of the night, uh, Jim knows that, you know, they always answer and, and give us assistance. So, we appreciate that. And, uh, if you get a, a card from me that says we need a new fire truck over there, um, just understands probably real. And, uh, you know, yeah, we'll take any bailout money you got. And, uh, but no, we thank you very much. And I just wanted to say those couple of things.
Thanks, Phil.
Have a good holiday.
Good morning. Formost, thank you for the approval of the vacation time payout. I, I think Mr. Callahan said it well. It's a difficult situation for us at the PD. I actually just recently ordered somebody to take some time off. And when I do that, I have to pull people from another shift to, to cover. So, it's important that my, my folks get the time off, but I think this year proved to just, uh, not, not work out for us because of so many things. So, I know it's going to help particularly my folks and thank you for bringing it forward before Christmas. Um, we, and we at the police department, we call it she money. And it's because it's money she don't know about. And so, it gives them an opportunity. It's not what y'all think, money she don't know about. So, it gives them an opportunity to maybe to go out and buy an extra nice gift for their kids and their spouses. And so, I know that means a lot. Um, thank you for mentioning Chief Raz. I will tell you that there were folks at the funeral who, um, attended his ceremony both in Washington DC as well as here. And I was very proud of the men and women who comprised my honor guard. Um, they noted that our honor guard looked quite a bit better than the Washington DC honor guard. Uh, I can't tell you how good that made me feel. Um, they practice a lot. It's kind of a thankless job. Uh, in fact, um, I'm hoping, I've spoken to Mr. Brown and, and, uh, coming in, the council members coming in, that, uh, we can make the swearing in a little bit more ceremonial and we can have them there to post the colors. And so, you all can appreciate in-house, um, just what a great job that they do for our city. Um, Mr. Sanders, I, I know you were present. I know you couldn't make it to our most recent swearing in. We sworn, um, five new officers, um, just last week. And in fact, tonight, I'll be traveling to St. Pete, um, for their academy graduation, where I'll be handing three young ladies our badge. And they'll be getting sworn in in the next few weeks as well. Uh, that puts us at eight people out on the road training with their field training officers. And so, keep in mind, we are, we are trending a little bit younger and newer and greener out there on the, on the street. And much like I said earlier, I always encourage folks, if they see opportunities for learning and for training out there, to, to bring opportunities forward. Let me know if it seems like you have a client, a customer, a citizen out there that you don't feel is getting, um, quite enough, uh, service or response. We're always happy to make sure I put the best folks out there because it also provides us a, a learning environment for my folks. Um, Thanksgiving, um, first off, happy Thanksgiving coming up. Keep in mind however, that, uh, about two-thirds of my workforce, and I'm sure half the fire folks are going to be working that day, 12-hour shifts. And so, always take a moment if you can to thank our public safety for what they're doing out there. We are doing something internal for our people to make sure that they have a, a pretty decent meal. Um, but while you guys are all home with your families and, and me too, as a matter of fact, I'll be out of town, um, they're out here keeping our streets safe. And I always like to try to use it as a reminder. And then finally, uh, yesterday, you might have seen it on Facebook, we, uh, dedicated our outdoor lobby. It's really become a, a beautiful place, more so starting yesterday because when the temperature dropped, it actually became a, a little bit more attractive. We actually even have a mural out there on some of the ugly cement manhole cover. Um, and so, I invite you all, if you have a citizen come in and you want to have an outdoor meeting, um, bring them on over there and sit on the bench. It's, it's really enjoyable out there. We've, we've seen some good use out of it. So, it's exactly what we anticipated it would be. Other police departments are taking notice of that. And I think we've, um, perhaps started a, a trend on that. So, thank you all.
And at our swearing in last week, uh, Mr. Sanders was there. We sworn five new officers. Um, and they, we asked him then, who's going to pin your badge on you? And so, the first two had wives and girlfriends. Next guy got up and he's from New York. And he said, I'd like to have my wife pin the badge on. Until his father, who was a New York City policeman, stood up in the back. He didn't know he was here. And he came down and pinned the badge on his son. Which was a really moving experience. Terrific.
And then it was followed by, um, I, I brought on some veterans, um, I thought kind of appropriate for, um, for last week. And, um, we actually had a, a veteran here and his wife, who's active duty, was able to come in from being deployed and pin on his badge. So.
And she came down in her camouflage to pin his badge.
They always try to get me to get emotional on that, but I refuse. Uh, but that was the closest I've been. So, and I think you'll agree, it was a, quite a, quite a ceremony. I invite you all to, anytime you all want to come to those, uh, they're, they're usually pretty meaningful.
Um, next week, on the, on the 11th.
Few weeks from now. So, I'm just.
The 11th of December, we have three, three women you're going to talk to tonight.
Mm-hmm.
We have three more female officers.
If, if you're not already, which, which you probably are, but be on alert for a monster truck that likes to get into the water. And Palmasola Bay is a prime location for that. So, I don't know. Maybe just let them go.
We're familiar with, uh, we're familiar with him. Yeah. I, I saw that. I already sent that out to my folks. So, yeah, absolutely. So, thank you.
Anything else, Carl?
I just have one thing. It's, um, because we noticed it going through the minutes to the CRA that, um, I would like your authorization to have me do, hire a search firm for the Planning Department Director. We get, we get caught up in these things when we think we do one thing and we did it for the CRA, but we really haven't done it. I'm doing it anyway. I mean, and moving forward with it. I'd just like the official authorization from city council to, to, um.
I thought we approved that.
We did in the CRA.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, there we go. I mean, it's, it's not that we slowed down or anything. It's just a case of officially from the city council.
So, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Third-party consultant.
That I get a raise.
Any discussion?
You pulled your trigger too fast.
Hearing none, let's vote. Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
For raise, no, yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion approved, Carl.
That's all I have.
Your attorney, anything?
Nope.
All right. Anybody else have anything to go to the order?
Jim?
Can we, can we be like a?